Approved as mail.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the discussion and approval of the claims. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We also have the item three is approval of memorandum personnel transactions. I will send that around for signatures and we'll make a motion for approval.
I love it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the authorization to sign for the authorization for initiation of hiring process.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have item four, Crittenon Center, approval of a resolution to abate taxes for Crittenon Center. I see Marion here for the discussion of that or presentation.
Good morning. I'm Marion Burnett, Executive Director at Crittenon Center, and with me is Ron Rolina, who's the Chair of our Board of Directors.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much for your time. We are requesting the ability not to have to pay any taxes on our property on Twenty-Eighth and Court. We have been assessed taxes for the last several years and have not paid them because we don't have the resources to do so. We are requesting not to have to pay any taxes. I do know that there are currently two tax sale certificates out there. I don't know what we can do about those.
Nothing.
But unfortunately, one was just three weeks ago that was sold. But I want the committee to resolve any future taxes that we would have to pay on that property.
Good. Any concerned questions from the board?
I don't have a problem with this. Diane?
Yes.
What would be, to forgive the taxes or abate the taxes from here forward, what date would we use on that?
What do you mean, the date?
The date. Would it be today's date or backdated?
Well, you would date it or abate it, whatever date you're doing it. It's for the, I don't know, I don't understand you, but there's two certificates now. One is to Woodbury County, which that's your decision to abate those.
Right.
You can cancel that certificate. The other certificate is to a private investor, so the county would have to reimburse them if you're going to abate the taxes. When we abate them, we abate them to date whatever you prove it.
Well, that was my question. We're abating from here forward. The county taxes, anything?
You can't abate future. You can only abate what's due. So whatever's due, you approve it.
There's been a tax certificate sold.
There was got two, correct? There's two, but one's to the county.
One to the county is not.
The 2011 one's been, this one's to the county. The 2011 one got voided because it was expired. This one's to the private investor. In Colorado. Yeah. Or this one. Yeah. Well, this is the wrong date, but. Yeah, June. This is July. This is June. Anyway.
I move we abate the taxes for the county.
Okay.
For the county year as well. Is that correct?
Well, then you'd have to do those after they're assessed. Assessed, yeah.
I move we abate the taxes.
But then there's, but now, we want to make this clear about the demolition charge for the $23,000. She has to live with the city on that, right?
Yeah, she has to go to the city on that.
That's step number three. I mean, I plan on going to the city council. Yeah, so we're just talking about real estate taxes. Right. So then, what about the one for the private investor? That's the $1,099. Yeah.
We can't abate those.
You'd have to reimburse the certificate holder, or they would have to pay it.
Actually, they would have to reimburse the certificate holder.
So what you're saying is most recent tax certificate for the $8,200 would be abated, and then any taxes going forward, and then we would just have to figure out the tax certificate to the private investor.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
So what do they need to do next, so this doesn't happen again?
I think step two for me is to pay the second certificate to a private investor, and then I have to go to the city council to dissolve the assessment against the property, and then it would be available for sale. We were selling it for $1.
I think that also will end up back here after.
I do too.
Pardon me?
I say, I think that will come back to us as well, after you go visit the city.
Okay.
Unless they just want to give the tax on it, but I doubt they will do.
Because I know there's.
That will end up back.
Like, we had an investor, we had a builder who wanted the property last January, but we had the tax certificates on that property, and then he went elsewhere. And then I know Habitat for Humanity is looking for property, and I'm willing to give it to them. I'm willing to donate the property.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving on to, item five is the, Dennis Butler, the discussion and approval of the appropriations for resolutions for 2015.
Okay, the first one's our appropriation resolution for the coming fiscal year. Before we can legally technically write a warrant or pay or anything on the new fiscal year, we have to do this resolution. And what we're doing here, we're appropriating the money to each individual department and division. Indirectly, this was already done when we did our certification to the state, because we certified to the state by service area, public safety, court services, mental health, roads, environment, things like that. There's nine different service areas. But to do it technically now, we're actually allocating what we did back there indirectly to create the public's, you know, the service area totals. We are now appropriating the money actually to each individual department. The first two pages are resolution. The second pages are a description of what each one of these department divisions are. So example, if you go to say 001-1001, question, what is that? So you go back here to 001-1001, and that's Sheriff, Dags Uniform Patrol. So we identified all the different departments and divisions, and you see there are quite a few of them. About a page and a half, double columns. There's a lot of them. So what this does, this actually totals back to what we actually certified for budget in March fifteenth. Obviously, we'll have a budget amendment number one coming up late July or early August to make some corrections and additions. There were things settled after the budget was certified.
So we need a motion initially here to approve the resolution for 2015 for those appropriations. Move it.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Mary.
And the item B and discussion and approval of?
These will have to be signed too, so I'll get them.
Yeah, did you see the signatures?
Yep.
Yes.
Item B is the inter-fund operations transfers resolution. You want to explain that?
Yep, these are inter-fund transfers that we do, taking where we levy taxes in certain funds for various areas and other funds. And by law, we have to actually approve these inter-fund transfers. So there's several of them. I think there's seven or eight of them. Quite a few of them, but we need to go individual on each one. So the first one is for transferring from general supplemental to general basic fund. We levy the taxes for our benefits. It's paid out of general basic. We levy the general sub because it's unlimited, and we transfer the money over at the end of the year. This would be an amount of $5,104,541.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next one is from rural basic to the county library fund. This is where their library board certifies to the county how much money they need to be levying down to rural townships in support of our county library out in Mobile. That dollar amount is $176,407.
Move it.
Second.
There's a second. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next transfer is rural basic services fund to secondary roads. Secondary roads cannot actually levy taxes, but we have to levy it within the rural basic fund and then transfer the money over. That amount is $1,028,000.
Move it.
Second. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next transfer, inter-fund transfer would be riverboat fund two, equipment replacement fund. This is where we pay for certain types of equipment out of our five-year equipment replacement. We do this out of this fund. We pay it out of riverboat funds. That is $197,759.
Move it.
Motion received. Signature.
Move it.
Your second?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next transfer is low-cost sales tax to general basic fund. What this money here does is supports our economic development department, which is a primary purpose of our low-cost sales taxes for economic development. This transferred the amount of their budget, which is $182,872.
Move it. Your second?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next transfer is low-cost sales tax to the rural basic fund. In this case here, we are paying partial payment for, for the planning zoning department, and that is an amount of $93,514.
Move it.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next transfer is riverboat funds to the general basic fund. In this case here, instead of levying taxes, we use riverboat funds for the payment of our nonprofit allocations we make each year, and that amount totals $74,300, or $74,971.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is conservation reserve to capital improvement fund. In this case here, it amounts to $100,000, and that is for improvements that they have on their five-year plan.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next one is conservation reserve fund to the debt service fund. In this case here, they assumed a life or obligation, I think it's for ten years, I believe, or the cost here is $107,514.
Move it.
Second.
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 Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, the next one is rural basic services fund to secondary road fund. This is for the special bridge project. This will be our second fiscal year of five fiscal years, and that's an amount of $1,300,000, and we put this in separate fund to keep accountability of the revenues coming in and expenditures. So when anybody asks, we can show it.
Move it. Your second?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And the last but not least is the general supplemental to the case management fund. We have split out case management, mental health, county services fund, and in this case here, it's a one-time transfer of $309,392, set up a cash reserve that will fund operating costs for first three or four months of the case management till we get reimbursement from the case management.
Move it. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
That's it?
I think that does it.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Everybody can.
Are you up for the next one?
Danny, you've got the next one.
Oh, okay, Ken. Okay, every year we fly, we do our financial report, and we do a CAFR certified annual financial report. And in this case here, we received, I think, awards the last twelve years. We just received a fiscal year 2013. This is a news release that George read it, and then we'll release it to all the different news agencies that are here or not here.
Yeah, this is quite an award that we get every year. It talks about the excellence of our financial department. The Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to Woodbury County by the governmental, by the Government Finance Office Association of the United States and Canada for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individuals, department, or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. This has been presented to Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, Dennis D. Butler, Finance and Operations Controller, Gene Jesson, Department County Auditor. The CAFR has been judged by a impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating and constructive quote "spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR." The GFOA is a nonprofit financial association serving approximately 17,500 governmental financial professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington DC. So I would just like to congratulate Dennis and also Gene Jesson and whatever departments it has taken for us to continue to get these awards and for the financial responsibilities we have here in the county. Thank you very much. And does the media have this? Have a copy of this?
Dennis, do, I heard that counties get this award.
There's probably three or four where you can stay alive.
Three or four.
Great award. Item six, discussion and authorization of loud fireworks to play in Holly Springs Bible Fellowship.
Move it.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Our next item is the, on you, Pat, we have discussion and decision introducing the resolution to give longevity pay to the sentence-appointed deputies.
Thank you. I just want to explain what I'm asking you folks to do here. What I'm asking is you to support a resolution that allows the, that supports the elected officials, the treasurer, the auditor, the sheriff, and hopefully sometime in the coming term, to pay longevity, make longevity payments to their deputies. To start out, I sent you an explanation, and so I'd like to explain that. What occurred, what does occur, what I've witnessed over the seventeen and a half years that I've been here, is that I recall when I was going to Iowa State, an economics professor talked about that public sector bargaining actually drives wages for the economy. And that's, that's where it all begins, and that's true here in Woodbury County. It starts with the collective bargaining that you folks do with the, with the public sector unions here. And that's what establishes the wage rates for those folks in the county. And then everything else kind of builds in place off of that. Because the next, there are actually three, maybe four groups that you've talked about that are groups of employees in Woodbury County. It's the collective bargaining agreement. Those folks are the ones that you start with. Maybe three or four years, whatever the length of the contract is, you bargain with them. And then as a result of there, what takes place is that you establish the wage rates for the wage plan employees, which are your department heads and other folks that work with management. They are not, they are members, they are not members of the collective bargaining unit. And then what occurs at the end of that cycle is that compensation board meets, and they put together wage recommendations for the elected officials. And then that fourth group that I was talking about are the deputies, of the appointed deputies and assistants of the local elected officials. And what sometimes occurs, and occurred this year, is that the elected officials did not, for whatever reason, did not receive a wage increase. And so when that occurs, then the deputies, who, majority of them are at, great majority of them are the statutory maximums for what they can receive, and that's a percentage of what the elected official can receive. So last year, what occurred is that everybody, the wage, most of the, the majority of the collective bargaining unit had about 2%. No, some of those were actually larger than that. But the, when you approved the budget, the wage plan employees got 2%, and the elected officials got 2%, and consequently, so did their deputies' age. 2%, the appointed assistants and deputies. Later on in that cycle, through a recommendation that J.D. Pellercell sent down to you, there was a disparity that had been growing between the collective bargaining unit and your wage plan folks. And so a plan was passed at that point that gave 1 and 1/4% on top of whatever raise those wage plan get for the next four years. So last year, the wage plan people got 3 and 1/4%. The deputies in their, or the elected officials and their deputies got 2%. And then this year, the same thing is occurring. You give them 2% to the wage plan employees, and plus they're going to get a point and quarter for the salary adjustment according to the second year of that plan, so they're getting 3 and 1/4%. If nothing occurred, then the deputies, appointed assistants and deputies, appointed deputies would receive no wage increase this year. And this has kind of occurred throughout the seventeen and a half years that I've been here. In 2007, they actually changed it so that the treasurer and the recorder and the auditor could actually add longevity payments to those deputies. And so, really kind of triggered when I was watching the YouTube video of the meeting when the county attorney said, you know, we should do, try to do something for those appointed assistants and deputies at that point. And I was talking to the auditor in Cedar Rapids, and he reminded me of section of the Iowa code that allows you to do that. They put the name of this code section is, but allows different types of payments to be made to the appointed assistants and deputies beyond what that statutory maximum is. And included in that are longevity payments and supplemental pay benefits and that sort of thing, but they selected longevity pay because that is the only thing that is specifically named in his IFRS covered for those, those folks. So that's why I proposed that, when I talked to some of the other elected officials about this and did some research on it, and came up with a plan to use this as a tool to help those deputies, that we can try to keep, help them keep pace with the change that takes place when wage plan employees get their raises, because it causes a morale issue. It really does, for you folks too and us as elected officials. When our deputies come to work every day, and they work side by side with people from your office, from the human resources department and others, and those folks are getting 3 and 1/4%, and it's pretty hard for them to stomach that they won't get a raise at all. And so, that's, I looked at this, this is what I came up with, and this is a tool that allows elected officials, and we're allowed to do it according to the code, and the instance is transparency, that's why I'm here, but also to ask for your support in doing this for those folks. I believe they, I believe they deserve to be treated fairly. So what we're proposing this year, because they didn't get a raise and they fell behind last year, is that the maximum that the elected officials agreed to is that we would do a payment for $100 of each year that those folks have worked for the county, of up to $100. So this wouldn't be something that we automatically do every year. It would be a reaction to whatever you folks did for your wage plan employees and, and collective bargaining. Is that we would adjust the amount, the elected officials, I am hoping this is the way it would work, is that we'll get together and kind of decide a factor that we would use to try to keep pace with what the wage plan employees are doing. So that's the proposal. I'll answer any questions.
I got quite a few of them, but what is an appointed assistant?
Appointed assistant is a term that they use in the code, and the unfortunate thing is when you look at appointed assistant, really, what I believe refers to is the county attorney's office, appointed assistants, assistant county attorney. And there's only one, and that's the unfortunate thing, is that code section does not allow for the only one person in the county attorney's office that would fit under this. This doesn't allow for that person to, to get it. But that's what, it actually said appointed assistants, deputies, and clerks is one of them that they use. I think that's old outdated language it comes from, and they have deputies, and the clerk's office is part of the county government and the county attorney's office. But it's an appointment, assistants, deputies, and clerks. Appointed.
The other thing, this is allowed, this is allowed by state code.
Yes, it is.
Why are you here?
As I explained, for transparency, I want.
Well, for transparency, I understand.
My folks to know that. But I'm also asking for your support, to show support for these folks that come to work every year. I could talk a history lesson about the way deputies have been treated for a long period of time. And I'm just offering you an opportunity to show your support for these folks getting what I believe is equal compensation.
I appreciate that, Pat, but I also appreciate the fact that you can legally do this, and this is the first time I can remember anybody coming to this board for, what, moral assistance or, what are we talking about?
Well, you're going to, what we're talking about, Larry.
If you legally do it, you've done it in the past.
But transparent, the reason I'm here is because I want you folks to understand what we're doing, and also, is that this is going to be part of the budget process from here on out.
That's entirely up to you or, you know, the treasurer or the sheriff or whoever, so it doesn't fall back on this board. I mean, we spent years in eliminating longevity pay. We brought it back in our union contracts, and, you know, we had to buy it back. So, speaking just for myself, I didn't want to go down this path with longevity pay. But you legally can do it, and, you know, go right ahead. That's.
But what do you think of the situation that the deputies have had to deal with over the period of time here?
Well, this board is like any other board of supervisors. Our hands are tied as far as what deputies are paid. That, again, is up to the individual elected official. Some of them get 80%, some get 85%. When you talk about a history lesson, I've noticed back in history that when a deputy is put on, they start at the top range, 80% or 85%, whichever is allowable. So in this statement, you talk about fair compensation. The compensation board makes a recommendation. The board then decides, you know, on elected officials, the board then decides whether to grant that raise or cut it or eliminate it. to grant that raise or cut it or eliminate it. In Woodbury County, all of our elected officials are approximately where they're supposed to be, they're in the top five, six, or seven of the counties. So, to say you've been treated unfairly-
I didn't say any elected official been treated unfairly.
Then the deputies are a percentage of your salary, so how are they being treated unfairly?
Well, because they had been, in my opinion, they had-
Right, and we've treated both that occasions of this.
And first off, to correct you, when I hired a new deputy, I did not hire them at the eighty percent level. I hired a new deputy just a short period of time, I did not hire them at the eighty percent level. When I first, when I first came here, the deputies, in the preponderance of them, it wasn't true of both the auditor's office and the Woodbury treasurer's office, is that they are all women. And when I was running for office, I asked to meet with those deputies, and they were scared to death, none of them would meet with me before the election. After the election, when I talked to them, the first thing that they said was that they would, it was income inequality, that's not the term they used, because that's a new term, but that's what they were talking about, is that they felt that they were unjustly being compensated, because, and I agreed with them, with what was occurring in the auditor's office at the time. And so I put together a plan, within the first six months, I went to the deputies, I said, hey, here's what I'll do, I'll bring you up, I'll put together a three-year plan, bring you up to those maximums. And they said, well, you could have done it right away. And so when a couple months go by, and just to talk a little bit about what can happen with elected officials, is that two department heads got ten thousand dollar raises here. And so at the time that that occurred, I raised my deputies to the maximum, I, at that point, came in on the same personnel action. And at the point, just like you and I can disagree, you said, you approved those two increases for those department heads, but then you turned and told me that it was too much for those deputies. That's, you know, so you and I can disagree with-
Yeah, and-
That, no, that's, that's what occurred.
You'd have to show me that, that somewhere.
I will, I definitely will. But that's, that's what occurred, and that's what, so I'm trying to give you an opportunity here, is because these deputies, when you talk to them, feel that they have been treated unfairly throughout the years.
How many deputies are we talking about, Pat?
Oh, it's probably a dozen or so, I think. About that.
Are, are all of them at the eighty percent or eighty-five percent now, or both, are they below the eighty or eighty-five percent?
I think there's only, I think there's only two that are not at the statutory maximum.
I've only got one, the max.
You've only got one at the max, how many do you have, Mike?
Five.
Five of them. So would this put them at the eighty-five percent, once this is-
It doesn't have anything to do with the-
It hasn't.
I do have a question, is this, do you think the intent of the legislature was to un tether the deputies from elected official salaries by allowing, you know, whether it be, I guess, a bonus or a longevity, or you mentioned a couple other things, but, I mean, I, that's just your opinion, I'm just, was wondering, because it is a change, isn't it?
What they did was add a section that was already for the deputy sheriffs, sheriffs already have the ability to do that, to pay, to make these payments to their appointed deputies. And that code section deals with the virtually, and some departments actually do this in Iowa, is all the deputies that are exempt can qualify for eighty-five percent on the sheriff. If he had exempt, if all his deputies were exempt employees, all of them could be paid at the eighty-five percent level, plus we added to this type of payments. That's what the code section says for the sheriff's department. They took that exact language and added it to, for the treasurer and recorder in 2007. And that was, one of the reasons is that some of them were concerned about, because it just allows you to pay overtime if the deputies were hourly employees, if they redeemed hourly, but it also, but it, it was something that the auditors and the recorders and the treasurers asked for in 2007, because of situations like this.
I have, I have this opinion that everybody in the county got at least a two percent raise except for elected officials and deputies, is that true?
They all, everybody-
At least two percent.
At least two, some, some of the, I know deputies, if you were in the upper-
We explained people all got three and a quarter percent, because that's what the plan was, was that J.D. put together, was a four-year plan, was to bring them more in line, because they, what the memo says is that they felt that the things had got out of whack with the collective bargaining brings, the units in Woodbury County, because those folks are starting to push up on being paid the same amount as what the Wage Plan. So that, in order to get that, get back to that appropriate separation, you put together the plan to pay them. And so the last two years, they've got three and a quarter percent raises, and the next two years, regardless of whatever the raise is, they still get one and a quarter percent added on top of it.
Mike, did you have a comment?
Well, I just, I just want, first of all, I want to thank Pat for all the effort and the time he's put into this. You know, we could raise all of our deputies eighty-five percent.
Right.
But the thing about this, five years down the road, if we get zero percent increase, then there's still something back. So, this, this one-time longevity pay issue seems like to me the fairest way to give them a little bit of compensation for the years and years that we've got zero percent increase. Because bargaining units don't ever get zero percent increase, and most times Wage Plan don't get zero percent increase. So, and I don't care my salary ever goes up, but people that work for me, I believe that theirs should keep pace. So I think, I think this is a fair and equitable way to do it.
Well, the state code says we have the, you know, we have the, you know, prerogative for doing it, so I don't have a problem with that, as long as it's in state code. Dennis, how, how much is this going to cost you?
It could be around thirty thousand, but when we, when we actually budget two percent for elected official deputies, it's almost a counterbalance, it's very, very close.
So the money basically is, is there to do that?
Well, when we did the budgets, we did take the money back out. Now, we're going to replace it when we do our first budget amendment, and in the past, we have a set precedent, so we have done this in the past. We have to, if our deputy sheriffs negotiation, the contract wasn't settled, last year, we added a percent and a quarter on to the Wage Plan, that was after the fact, I didn't get down any time to do it.
Right.
So, we have a presence here where we will add the money in during the budget amendment or late July or early August.
Okay.
And the board, the only thing, the board does set the number of deputies, but a lot of these officers are, there are minimums of number of deputies now anyway.
Right. Okay, well, what's the pleasure of the board?
I, I say that it's in the state code, the elected officials, you know, are free to do this, and it does not need the blessing of this board, so why are we involved in it at all? And Mike, in your case, Mike, if you've got room, you can increase your people anytime you choose.
I can, but like I say, if I do it, then for five more years, we could zero percent increase, that they, you know, they can ground one year, which basically that's what this plan does, without having to increase and keep them at eighty-five percent forever.
For me, and working with Pat, and like I told the board when I first brought this issue up, it's about recognizing those employees that have been here, at least from my perspective, for quite a long time. Now, you heard Pat say that my first assistant, Mark Campbell, isn't even applicable to this, which is fine. When I said that, saying, to make those statements, I wasn't just talking about Mark Campbell, I was talking about all the deputies and assistants. What I'm hearing Pat ask for, and what I would like the board to recognize, is the contributions of those folks. What I'm hearing is that if the code says you can do it, then go ahead and do it, why are you here? But when you gave that one and a quarter percent to all those Wage Plan people, you said, we respect and appreciate the jobs that you're doing. What I would like to hear is that support that Pat is asking for, that says, put it in your budget, we would like to address that. We appreciate those employees as well, and anything we can do to help with those employees, we're certainly going to take a look at it. That's what I would like to hear, because all I'm hearing right now is-
Well, I'm willing to say it, I do respect every employee in this county, and I certainly can understand the morale issue when everyone around you has a raise and you do not. I do applaud you for finding a section in the code that allowed you to be able to, to give a raise when, you know, you did not receive one, to your deputies, so I think that is a good deal for the deputies, and they work hard. I think everyone in this county works hard, so I'm willing to say thank you for, for what you do.
And I believe that's all the resolution is now.
Okay, and I mean it.
In my perspective, my deputy's been here for thirty-plus years, doesn't get an increase.
Yeah, that's-
The first one here, pretty much every day, the last one to leave, he recognized he doesn't get an increase. But because I didn't get an increase, he, he didn't bicker over that, he was probably disheartened because all the other folks were getting one. None of them were working harder than he is. They're working hard, but none of them can say that they're working maybe harder than he is. And so, that's what prompted me to step up. When I got a thirty-year employee, and you're saying, well, if the code allows it, why are you here? That just didn't sit up to me, because he's not upstairs bickering about all those Wage Plan employees getting a raise that he doesn't, just because the code allows it.
PJ, there's not anybody at this table that doesn't appreciate their employees.
But say that. Is what I'm saying, he didn't say that.
Why doesn't the elected official who they work for say that?
We say it all the time, I gave him a plaque, I had a party for him.
If you're saying it all the time, it doesn't apply to your employees-
It doesn't work, he works for the county.
It does apply to Pat, or Mike, they can legitimately do this.
Right.
Why don't they do it?
Because sometimes when they include it in the budget, you cut it out, because you sell them it's not warranted, and if you're going to take that, we're going to take this over here.
We, all right, to be clear, I think elected officials, I think we can agree, is we, we are going to do it. We are going to-
And, and you don't have any backlash here at all?
Well, all we're asking you to do is say thank you, is to support a resolution that is non-binding. All it says is that you appreciate these folks, the work that they do.
Yeah, and, and we do, I mean, we, we appreciate them, and also all the other employees.
All right, in order to show our appreciation, I would move that we approve the resolution presented.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I've got a problem with fair compensation. Are you telling us with this motion, they have not received fair compensation?
Everybody else got a raise, they're the only ones that didn't.
They're a different category, they're treated differently by the state, they're treated differently by the elected officials, the elected officials who've got in this room all treat their deputies in different ways.
No, we don't.
Are we, are we not just-
I don't.
Well-
You don't have one. Aren't we just voting on the resolution for this longevity, it's not about fair pay?
You know, and I think-
Where, where does it say fair pay there?
Fair compensation, right there.
Well, you know, the, the thing is, that term is a subjective, ladies and gentlemen, term, and what's fair to me is maybe not fair to you, but the fact is, is that we do appreciate every employee that we have in this county, they all do a wonderful job. That's why they, they stick with us for such a long period of time, except for some departments there, some departments, like your sheriff, the jailers, I don't know how I could work in that department and, and stay there for twenty years, I don't think I could be a jailer and stay there for twenty years. That's a pretty negative, but ninety-nine percent of those folks stay with us, so we do appreciate them, and, and I think they appreciate, you know, the salaries and also the benefits that we give them, and so I think that we can basically go ahead and vote on this resolution and let this happen. We can make the adjustments in the amendment, in the, in the budget coming up, and, and let this happen, so. We're getting into a lot of subjectivism here, which we don't need to be into, because it's like me saying, I love this picture over here, but you may not see the significance of that beauty in that picture, but I, so that's, that's where we're at. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item number eight, which is the planning and zoning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before you, this morning, present the planning and zoning office's recommendation upon a expansion request of the will of dairy. Historically, you may know this as the former O'Wego Dairy owned by the Hunt family, they sold it in 2011 to a California company based out of Tipton, California, and they wish to increase the number of cattle, excuse, dairy cattle they have onsite, basically immature dairy cattle by eight hundred, which would increase the animal unit capacity from the present twenty-five hundred to whatever that, the math is.
Thirty-three hundred, you've got forty-three hundred here, we're supposed to-
Thirty-three. We've done our onsite evaluation, published notice to the public, we are in favor of recommending, you vote to offer your recommendations to your VNR for a number of reasons, primarily because this entire expansion is within the previously approved perimeter of the facility, which lies at the southeast corner of Eastland Avenue and 280th Street. I'd be happy to address any questions you have, I feel this facility is a great complement to our economic atmosphere, and this expansion will only enhance that.
Of all the stuff the Hunt brothers own out there, this is about the only thing that isn't underwater.
The rain events we've had far exceed the hundred-year event that the floodplains are based upon, and primarily, it's not within inundated areas because of those rains, because of the rating plan we approved in the past, which raised the elevation for the entire facility, so, they should be commended at doing that.
Absolutely. Is there a motion? Did you make the motion, Mark? Yep.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I think we've gone through, if your vote takes care of item B, I will present a communication to your chairman for signature.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a vote on B too?
Well, he says we've taken care of item B. Let's do secondary roads, Mark Neer, would you have a step up?
I have a couple of items today. June seventeenth, we had the flooding on the bridge at City of Bronson on the Corfline on County Road B-38. The low bid for the bridge was submitted by Dixon Construction Company of Correctionville, Iowa, for one million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars and thirty cents. I recommend a word of bid.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
And we have two certificates of completion to approve today. The, I have a different rendition of this one, I'm just trying to find it. The first one is for Dixon Construction and Correctionville, for the replacement of twin E by E reinforced concrete box culvert on 280th Street. This was northeast of Danbury, contract price was hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Works completed and structure's open.
Okay, move it. Second.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item C?
Second one is Midwest Coatings of Missouri Valley, complete work on longitudinal joint repair on County Road B-25 from Holly Springs to Smithland, contract price was seventy-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. The work's been completed and is in good repair.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Nice to have nothing to do.
During the Republican Council, I'm just doing a-
During the Republican Council, I'm going to do an update on flooding and potential for aid from a couple of different departments. I'll forward update now.
Yeah, we can do that later. Thank you. Item ten, we have discussion and action on security renovations for the courthouse. Ed, would you step up, please? We need some, first item on the agenda there is the update of the west door meeting the fire marshal's code and allowance for closures.
We have taken, we have got the project put in place and ready to go for the west doors. We should have parts and materials in week of the fourteenth. Should be able to begin closure there. We set up a kind of a unique system, thanks in part to Mike Hiddon and his input. We were able to find that we could set up a system that allowed, if you pushed on the door panels, it would give you a few seconds delay. That few seconds delay would then avert the courthouse security, would also tie into the rest of our system, and then would allow, and then the doors would all open at that point. But it does, it would be viewable on security cameras as well, and would also be there. It would notify everybody so that there weren't surprises.
That's good.
So, somebody did leave, they were there. But it met all the fire codes and all of those kind of things, too, which have kept the fire going.
Good. Any questions from the board on that item?
When's that gonna be in?
It should be the week of July fourteenth.
And how much is that gonna cost?
Mike, do you kind of know the cost of that?
The neighborhood, five thousand, I believe, is two thousand and twenty-three. It was an annual budget.
So, it was under what we... It's about just under five thousand.
Okay, item B is relocation and installation of the new handicap chair lift and ramp for the door.
Yes, it, I think it's with this one. We were able to, we went out to several places to try to get bids. We had several people turn us down and not want to bid on it. A E L did bid, their bid for the lift was twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty. Then we, and their bid on a wheelchair ramp was more expensive. So, we took the numbers from Gateway Engineering, and Gateway Engineering came in at four thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
That's to put the ramp in?
That's for the ramp. The other's for the lift. First one's for the lift itself, which would bring the wheelchair up. And then the ramp, because of the...
Would allow them to come off.
Yeah, would allow it to come off and stay flat.
So, you have a twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty, and a four thousand bid?
Yes.
Together, okay.
Yes.
So, we're looking at about twenty-eight thousand there for the lift and also for the ramp.
Yes. And the nice thing about it is it will accommodate a share of any size.
That was my question.
We have less issue than we have in the current system. They don't, they aren't going down the stairs at an angle. They're going up once and straight across. So, it does make it better for them, makes it safer, and should comply. So, in all of this, we've gotta comply with the historic preservation issues. So, there are some issues there with everything that we do and how you approach it. This allows us to comply completely better as well.
And when can you have that in?
We're taking commission to Tom and get them a, I'm guessing, pretty quick. This also allows you two hundred and fifty more pounds or all the weight to come up that, so we won't have to use our alternative elevator.
Any trade-in value?
Probably not, Mark.
But it does put us, I think, in a much better position than we were with a handicapped access to our courthouse.
I agree. I am so glad we're doing this piece of it.
Yeah, it's really necessary.
Yeah, I think it definitely is. It's just an overall great improvement, even if we weren't concerned about the security.
That is right.
What was the price on the door openers?
The door openers, they're thirty-nine hundred some odd dollars.
That was the next item. Item C was the handicap door openers.
First, I'd like to move on, accepting the bids on the ramp and the chair lift.
Second?
On item A, are you gonna approve each one of these individual items?
Well, we probably should improve them on an individual basis. Let's do item A first, which is the fire marshal code allowance closures.
Move on A.
Second on A.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Move on B.
That is the handicap chair lift and ramp.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now, we need the handicap door openers and at the northwest door.
Move it.
Second.
I already got it.
Would you say it again?
I think that's...
Forty-nine hundred some odd cents.
Okay.
The reason for the price for it was since we had to have two openers, so it's a double door. There's no way to have one opener open both of them. And you wouldn't be able to have access, wheelchair access, without both doors coming in.
If those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now, we wanna open the bids for the courthouse security cameras.
And I think with the security cameras, it's important to know before you even open them, there's really no action or discussion to be on security cameras. We wanna take the bids and then look through their variations and analyze these along with our I T folks.
Good idea.
I mean, we've gotta make sure that this is right, not just for September first of two thousand and fourteen, but also September first of two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, and on up. So, we wanna make sure that we've got a very up-to-date system, that it's digital, that it's doing all the right things. And so, we are, so we do want to do it. And again, we would ask that we bring this back in two weeks after we've had the chance to meet with everybody, discuss it, involve John and his folks.
Okay.
And to make sure that this is done right.
Excellent.
First bid we have is from Quality Communications, Triview Communications of Sergeant Block. And this is, there's an awful lot of detail. I think if you start looking through this, you can see why we don't want to prove this necessarily. Today, this may be the right bid, but try to figure all of this out in the time we get done. They've put together quite a book here.
Good.
The basic bid for it is ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Ten thousand what?
Ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
And how many cameras are this?
Four cameras. So, we've got cameras in the lobby. We've also got cameras monitoring exits, potential entrances and exits.
Plus your recorders, plus monitor.
This would include wireless and wired cameras. Some of the cameras are not gonna be as clear if they're not wired, so they would be wired. So, and the cameras in the lobby themselves would be wireless, but out the external cameras would be wired. And we look to see where those pieces, where the wiring would run. And then, again, we'd be in compliance with the historic preservation.
We wanna minimize the number of holes drilled in this building.
Yes. And there is with this, they're saying, due to wiring and pathways not being visible and easily accessible, we'll do wiring on a time and materials basis. Labor's seventy-five dollars an hour, and the CAT five E is twenty-five cents a foot. So, then, there is that to take into account. They go into a wide variety of specifications. They do provide a couple of alternatives. But again, it's a bid that provides just exceptional viewing. Would provide viewing, our goal is to provide viewing not only at the station where courthouse security would be, but also so that it could be available in other areas, perhaps even viewable across the street and share as part of. So, that's our long-term goal. We certainly want all those folks exactly as much access as possible. And then, the next bid is from Electronic Innovations. Electronic Innovations bid talks about the workstation, enterprise license for up to four camera channels, unlimited client connections. Does provide a pentadome and indoor dome and some other things. Does, and the bid comes in at eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. But again, we wanna analyze these. We can reject any of these bids. We can reject all of them and start over if we need to. We wanna make sure that we do have the system in place that's gonna provide security, not just today, but for years to come. The next bid is from Electronics Engineering, maybe. I'll get it eventually. I may need it. Thank you. An Electronic Engineering's bid comes in at ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four Does include five megapixel camera, two megapixel camera, some other pieces that are there. It does include the CAT five wiring. The next bid is from T S I. This bid comes in at twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Includes the five megapixel cameras, the two megapixel cameras.
Twenty thousand what in?
Twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Does include an eight-camera-based N V R, two terabyte hard drives, eight-camera software, three hundred megabyte antennas, and the wiring, and install and trimming. The next bid is from Midwest Alarm. This bid, the total price including system, twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Scope of the work starts out by discussing installing a three-camera IP video system to view the main floor lobby, Douglas Street entrance, the handicap entrance on Seventh Street, and the double doors in the alley. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm willing to refer these bids to the Human Resources Director for valuation and recommendation.
Okay. Second.
On the I T department.
Just for you guys to know, there was two more bids that they must have backed out and never did get in.
And never did come in?
There was two more coming in that actually came in and I looked at it, and apparently chose not to get to it.
Still look at it, okay. Well, we've got some very good bids, and we've got five of them, so.
We do have five good bids and some high-quality companies there, so.
Do you want this back in two weeks?
Will that give you enough time to look at it, two weeks?
I think I should. Should we, I think it should give us enough time.
Yeah, because I do want I T department to be involved in this.
Absolutely. We wanna make sure that everything's wired internally.
Absolutely. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number eleven. And that is the, we have discussion with the collaboration purchase agreement with the City of Sioux City regarding purchase network of office supplies and contracts. I have been and Dennis have been meeting with the city the last six, seven months on various ways that we can work together in collaboration with services and programs, you know, between two governmental bodies. And this is the results, this is part of the results of us meeting with the city manager, Donna Forker, Mike, and our deliberations with, in ways that we can save money and work together in making our governmental bodies more efficient and for the citizens of Woodbury County. I was really virtually impressed with this recommendation primarily made by the city to us in that we can, and this is gonna be on a volunteer basis by the various department heads, and also the elected officials to participate in. There seems to be a tremendous amount of savings here that can be garnered from our participation in purchases of a lot of different items. And it just seems that, just makes common sense that we should be doing something like this. Don, I'm gonna turn it over to you to make a presentation, call anyone up to the podium that would like to talk about what we're doing, or trying to do here.
Basically, what this is, is a cooperative agreement that we have entered into with a lot of other governments with Office Stevo. Office Stevo now is also merged with Office Max. So, you're gonna see a wider supply of services and goods available to us because of the merger. But what it does is they go out and competitively bid items that cities, counties, hospitals, any nonprofits need that are bulk in nature, so that we all get better pricing. If we were to bid something ourselves, we are not gonna get the volume that this cooperative group has. This contract that we signed, no way limits us to any expenditures. You would do the exact same thing. Our system works where we order office supplies out of catalog or online, and the next day we get delivery of those items. The way we at the city do it is we have purchasing cards that they just charge our credit card, and the bills all taken care of them. And then, once a month, purchasing reconciles the credit card to the city, and we pay the bill.
And I can't stress enough the flexibility of the program. There's thousands of items. The paper you have in front of you here is a sampling of that, just to give you a little bit of the feel of the differences in the cost. But the nice thing is, we still go out and bid some of these items ourselves, outside of this contract also. So, you're not limited on having to use it, not using it, what you order, what you don't order, it's when it makes sense. You go online, and all of us have went online. You click it, buy it, it shows up the next day, and it's cheaper.
And if you order fifty dollars' worth of supplies, there's no delivery charge, which is very nice item, too. Some of the items that this contract includes, those janitor supplies, toner, office supplies, paper, and furniture. City of Sioux City currently does not order any paper out of this. We actually do enough bulk in the print shop that we get better pricing. And they store it here in Sioux City, and we just have to deliver what we need. But for an individual department or elected official that might have a smaller quantity, this might be better pricing than they currently get, because you are doing a group item. The handout that we gave you was just kind of some ideas of what the catalog or the online system will say is being paid, and what we're actually paying for the things at. I think the toner is probably the thing that, everybody's toner's so unique, they really, sometimes they are much more savings, but sometimes they're not, so we've been subbing those items out. But like a calculator, which is a standard calculator, you can see you've got a tremendous savings there. And the big part here, and I can't stress enough, this is voluntary. This is not, you're not gonna sign on with the city contract. It will be the Woodbury County signing their own contract with consortium, but it will work just the same way. Our salespeople will be the same. It's just something that we have found to save us a tremendous amount of money over the years we've been doing it, and felt it was something that the board might be interested in, also, and the local officials.
And Office Stevo's also agreed. They would set up a test customer... And Office Depots also agree. They would set up a test customer for any of your folks who just want to go out and play with it, sample it, um, just get a feel for how it works. Um, they would do that as well.
Is there a store in Sioux City?
They, they are currently in the merger of Office Max and Office Depot and they're eliminating towns like Oklahoma that has two or three stores of each. So they said, once they get past that, then they will go start looking at sites and Woodbury County is definitely a site that they're interested in. And so we might be seeing a store here.
And they have next-day service?
Yes.
Now, the Sioux City school that's participating in this program.
Yes, we do.
There are no minimums?
If you go under fifty dollars, they will bill, charge you delivery charge. But most office people get their orders together and order so that they don't pay the delivery charge.
Mark's got his hand up.
Yes, Mark.
Two days of liver freedom, mobile as well.
They will deliver wherever your site is.
Forever forever as long as it's under fifty dollars.
Yes. And we've got some catalogs here for people to look at. Plus, after today, if you are in favor, we will have the salesman contact Dennis and start getting a system set up so that you can play with it, look at it, see if you're interested.
Well, I would encourage all department heads and elected officials to, uh, grab the catalog and also visit with, uh, with, with, particularly with Dennis and, uh, and work with, with Donna and also Mike here to, uh, get started on something like this. Because I can see, uh, that we can save, you know, the, you know, the taxpayer a lot of money on this. As you can see from this short list here, and you've given us, uh, and it's, uh, a, a, a long list of, of items that can be purchased that, uh, would be beneficial to the entire, uh, county. So it's something that, uh, we can do that's not going to cost the county any money. Uh, but it's certainly going to save, you know, the taxpayers a lot of money on a lot of different issues. And, uh, we do appreciate Donna and the city managers', uh, uh, you know, cooperative, cooperative attitude and, and, and workability here on, on, on issues like this and there'll be more coming forward in the future. So, uh, we do appreciate that.
We appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Did this one have to bid or how did this come up?
Once upon a time, we did bid this out. We first worked with Staples and last time we bid it, we went with Office Depot.
National.
We, we used to do Staples and this time Office Depot came in and bid it.
What is the difference between that and the, and the kind of discounts that we get, say per bids and other places?
Actually, we're finding because of the volume going through the consortium, the discounts aren't better on most items just because of sheer volume.
Did the city, if any, uh, was there any concern raised when you did this about the local taxpayers, uh, those entities that are located here in town?
Yes, I mean, that was a discussion, but just, we're looking at, for the last ten years, we've had extremely tight budgets with basically maintenance group or reduction budgets. And this was the way not to raise property taxes versus save money on our budgets. We all have to have paper. We have to have toners. We, and there's so many supplies you have to have to run an office. This was just to keep that level of inventory up.
So overall, is there any estimate, uh, the overall dollars that you'd save the city?
I don't know if we have our number right handy that would.
No.
Which you're up to.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Anyone else? Yes, sir. Would you identify yourself, please? Come on up.
Yeah. I'm Steve McNally and I'm with Perkins Office Solutions. And, um, although I applaud the forward thinking, uh, of, uh, starting with a purchasing cooperative contract, I, I think there's a flaw in the ci- in the thinking. And as your local vendor and also, um, property taxpayer, as are my twenty employees that live in Woodbury County, that's the flaw. Um, we want the county to save money. But we also want to point out that supply cooperative purchasing contracts are available both to be entered into with your local vendor. I've been in my current location since nineteen ninety-six. Uh, it's a very large location. I pay a lot of property tax. We are the current PACE Premier Purchasing Cooperative Contract Holder. Uh, PACE Premier Contract is one of the largest, uh, cooperative purchasing supply contracts in the Midwest. It's administered out of Avera Health Systems in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And, uh, it, once again, these things are all bid. They are bid out. Uh, we went through the bidding process in two thousand and twelve and we were competing against Office Max, Staples, Office Depot, and, and some other local vendors. We were awarded that five-year contract. Uh, we serve over five hundred locations. Some of them are Avera locations and others are state and local, uh, and school facilities. Uh, we are also the U.S. Communities Contract Provider for Woodbury County. Independent Stations is the contract holder for, uh, U.S. Communities Contract, Cooperative Contract, and it is the largest cooperative contract in the United States. And we are the provider of that contract for this county as well. So, to sum it up, uh, I think that a cooperative contract is a good thing. I think there are savings to be had, but you can have that ability to enter into that contract and have that savings. I know that on the Premier PACE Contract, we pay a quarterly four percent rebate, uh, on purchases, uh, to their vendors. You can have that with a local vendor. You can keep your local rep, like Janet, who's called on the county offices for over twenty years. Not, not only does she know the items on the spreadsheet, she knows the appropriate substitute for items that are just as good as a name brand. It's, it's, uh, free delivery for a one-dollar item because we're in the area, we're three blocks away. We deliver everywhere. We have next-day delivery as well. So, I, I, I applaud the thinking, but I, I disagree with entering in, into the, the contract with a non-local vendor when you can do the same thing with a local vendor. And we've appreciated your business and the relationship that we've all had throughout the years. And, and I applaud the fact that you want to have partnerships, uh, with the city. I think in today's economy and environment, partnerships are the way to go. We all have to pull together. So, uh, I think that you're on the right track. I, I just, uh, of course, disagree with the way, uh, to get there, so.
Well, we appreciate your comments. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I've been in the office supply business for probably twenty-five years. I want to keep your business. I come in every couple of weeks and I, I feel that Perkins can provide you with great service, competitive pricing, and we're local. And I think that, that says it right there.
Yeah, lady, you want to?
Um, I pretty much want to say the same thing. I've been doing sales throughout with Perkins for about seven years now and I as well call on some accounts here and I know them personally and, um, I live here in town and we visit and I know their families and it, we deliver next day and I just think staying local is the way to go because we can do the same services as anybody else.
And the same pricing and the same purchasing cooperative.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your comments and you've said just about everything that I would have said in, in reaction to what you've said. We do have to be cognizant of that as, uh, as far as governmental bodies are concerned because you are important and, uh, you are local and you do pay taxes and you provide an excellent service. Uh, I'm familiar with Perkins and some of the others too. So I want to thank you for your comments. Okay, we will be cognizant of that. Thank you.
One of the things I did say, it is the cooperative agreements that we found is what saves the money. Regardless of who you go with, it would be worth your while to get a listing of all the cooperative and get it out and see where you meet your most savings. I mean, we are all for saving the most money.
We, absolutely.
This is who we went with because that was our most savings when we did the bidding.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Only some catalogs.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Catalogues are there, ladies and gentlemen.
What are we going to do on that, sir?
Item number twelve is hearing of being individual or a group wishing to make a presentation on an item that on the agenda. Uh, Mark, near.
Can you ask me a little question here for a second? We've met with FEMA and with the Federal Highway Administration and have started to, uh, provide information to those two agencies. Governor's Office has made a request for disaster assistance on behalf of Woodbury and the other company or counties included in the gubernatorial proclamation. Uh, they were out Friday and, uh, took a look around county and a lot of the damage that we had did a preliminary assessment and have sent that information on through channels to see whether a presidential designation will be given to the county in this case. As we've talked about, we have, uh, two bridges that have been damaged, um, severely to the point where they're going to, one north of Mobile is, is still standing but barely. The one down south by Odo is gone. We had a question called on one down by Odo.
Right.
It is in the fiscal year twenty sixteen program already. But with the, with the loss of that structure, it may now be eligible for FEMA funds, which would be, uh, desire. We, we have the match money there, obviously. FEMA funds will allow us to bring that project along a little quicker.
Good.
Uh, you know, at this point, we'd be looking at a full year, um, unless we really reshuffle some projects. And, uh, it, it does take a little time to get a bridge from zero to, uh, to eighty left, so. It is, uh, it is a, an important bridge in the system that, uh, we had planned to replace anyway. So I think that's important that we're to get out there. Right now, uh, with the amount of damage we have on the, uh, federal aid system, we're looking in somewhere in the area of, uh, seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars minimum in repair costs out there on the roads where we have the, uh, slides. Uh, we've been instructed by, uh, staff that handles transportation issues through the DOT to, uh, prepare, uh, what they call a DDIR, which is, I can't remember what the, uh, initials stand for, but it, it's basically a report to them showing the costs. They'll look at what, at the eligibility of those projects, so. Uh, that will look at first when we submit and then it can be used as a pattern to take care of the rest of them.
What are, what are our chances, Mark, in, in, in getting those FEMA funds for that, for those things, for that, that project?
FEMA, I can't really say right now. Federal Highway Administration has already allocated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the state. Now that includes Lyon, uh, Sioux, Woodbury, and other counties in the area, so.
Do you think we have about a fifty-fifty chance in getting those funds or?
My guess would be a little better than fifty-fifty on the, on the federal highway. FEMA, I would say, I, I don't know what's going on in the other counties, but we're looking at about a million dollars damage on roads that are not, uh, under the Federal Highway Administration.
Do they do eighty, eighty-five percent like FEMA?
I am trying to remember what Federal Highways is. On some of the work, it's higher than what FEMA is where they will pay up to a hundred percent of some items, so. Uh, we'll have to see after they rule on whether or not the damage is eligible, Mark. I, I know it's at least eighty percent.
Yeah.
Which is typical of federal highway administered projects. And again, in some cases, it may be higher.
They've only got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Northwest Iowa.
That's allocated immediately. So that money is already out there where they're going to begin distributing it to, I'm sure, assist with some of the emergency response that's been done by all the counties. The rest of the money will follow later, assuming that they do, uh, declare us eligible for that.
And that's just roadwork?
That is just roadwork, but it also includes some of our Hunger Canyons projects that we have submitted to FEMA. Um, right now, we're trying to get a ruling because some of those were damaged in the course of this flood. But I've got to tell you, they did a great job of protecting the bridges upstream. We would have undoubtedly lost additional structures had we not had those in place. Uh, there's one on Hancock Avenue where it's, uh, Hancock's, uh, north-south Farm to Market Route along, uh, just trying to give you a good, uh, good idea. It, it's the road that comes out on B thirty-eight about two miles to the west of Landville. But it, it's major north-south route. And, uh, we've got a couple of bridges that are in the program there. One of those bridges, you could see where the riprap on downstream side of our, you, you're familiar with those, we have a grounded, uh, riprap, a sheet pile cutoff wall and then loose riprap that takes the water around the curve. Um, we lost a lot of the riprap on the downstream side. You can see where the nick point came right to the sheet pile and stopped.
Wow.
And, uh, you know, we could see at least a couple of feet of channel, uh, elevation loss on, on that structure alone. So really, that was money well invested, not what I stayed in the parking bag and invited to Woodbury County to get these projects done.
Are you going to document that for Hunger Canyons and their quest in Des Moines?
Um, we're getting enough, uh, we're getting enough pictures where we will be talking about how that has really made a difference on, on this flood in particular. Because it, it was very apparent on more than one structure that, uh, that, uh, the, uh, problems stopped when we hit that, uh, when we hit that sheet pile and ground for a rap, so. I would say that's been a, a very successful program.
They do work.
Quite so. Next item I had was some information that our consultant shared with us on, uh, the, uh, on the Orton Slough. Uh, one of the things that we have been asked to look at at the last public meeting, I'll let these get around so the board can take a look, was to look at, uh, running a ditch around either in the west side of Brown's Lake or the Brown's Lake Outlet. And you can see he's prepared two options here. One is the current option three, um, which is our open ditch design. Roughly the cost, once you get south of two hundred and sixtieth street, is, uh, he's showing ninety-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. To take that water in an open ditch around to the Brown's Lake Outlet, now this would be going all the way down working a road and coming in near the Brown's Lake Outlet structure that we, uh, protected during the flood of, uh, twenty-eleven.
So it would be the backside of Brown's Lake?
Yes. The estimate for doing that ditch around there was seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. An increase of over six hundred and thirty thousand dollars to carry the water that far. Now, one option would be is to come into the north end of the DNR property, which would be, um, you know, it's hard for me to point here, but you can see there's a couple houses on the west side of Port Neal Road. Uh, you come in south there, you can kind of see that fence line. That is the, roughly the boundary for wildlife management area. You could turn that project and carry it into the west side and outlet that water near where, uh, Port Neal, uh, the power stations discharge their water in Brown's Lake. But you're still probably looking at at least, it's fifty percent of the distance, you're probably looking at fifty percent of the cost. So you're still in that three hundred and seventy to four hundred thousand dollar range to take it around there as well. I mean, if we could find a, a partner or, uh, uh, some kind of a, uh, assistance, this might be something that, uh, the Orton Slough could take on or as part of long-term planning. But this is a terrific burden to change the outlet of the folks that are utilizing the Orton. And, you know, I think this, this most recent rain has been a real illustration of why the Orton needs work. That area is still flooded.
A lot of standing, standing water.
Yes.
Clear out the.
Time for it to get away. And we have been to the outlet, the Infae, but it's working just as fast as a twenty-inch tile will go. The twenty-inch tile just, uh, takes time to drain.
Bait it. Uh, from the railroad tube, it's now over the fence and up to the Interstate twenty-nine.
I, I would believe it. Uh, we had another two to four inches of rain yesterday. I haven't checked my gauge. I forgot to check my gauge at home. It was my daughter's birthday last night.
Did you, uh, did you get any results on the water?
Um, we did. Uh, we, we just had those. We're still kind of taking a look at them. We should have something with that to share with that word. Um, we did, uh, we, we just had those, we're still kind of taking a look at them, and we should have something with that to share with that word. We will have Ivan Dressler next week to talk to the board, and he's looking for guidance on preparation of his final report. So, um, he's, you know, he, he's at a point where we, we've collected and shared all the information that's possible on the strategic improvement project. Uh, he'd like to consult with the board to see which way he would like it, so that's one of the reasons we're sharing this information now, so that we, we think we've got all the information in your hands now that would be necessary to give direction on that project.
Okay.
At least we hope so. That's all I had, extra, unless one of you folks had any other questions.
No, I don't, very young.
How tall is Brown's Lake now?
I haven't checked Brown's Lake's elevation to see where it is in comparison to normal water levels. I see Rick's gone, I, I would have asked him, but, uh, we've been busy enough on the permit system.
Yeah.
My question is, if it's flooded like Mark says, if you were bringing that water down, would we be flooding anything down there we didn't want to flood? That's why, that water's got to go somewhere.
Where we get to that Brown's Lake Outlet, that water works its way out of the river. So we would essentially be dumping that water out, Brown's Lake has a, a, a structure that's located.
The west end.
That way. Uh, they have a, an elevation control structure that's located right about at this point in here. And it's a, it's, it's, I've been told a stoplog structure where they basically can stack.
Right.
Plank unit, so to speak. And then that controls the elevation of the lake. Anything that goes above that elevation goes to Brown's Lake Outlet, and then nothing leaves when Brown's Lake is, is in low condition. So, um, the water does, is capable of getting out fairly quickly. You know, in this case, once it gets south of the road here, it's headed for the river. There's really no.
What's that entire area down there where the, I don't know the name?
You're talking around Snyder's Bend?
No, it's west of there. I forget what it's called.
Um, Mid-American has some area that's, uh, that's a little bit to the west there, but my understanding was that this channel connects event, you know, with the river downstream. I don't know if we, if we got Snyder or the.
Yeah, I think that's before it gets to Snyder's Bend.
It is. But as far as property of value, I, I think you're going to see the water get there about the same pace either way. It's just a matter that water won't come into Brown's Lake anymore. You know, if the lake is low, you won't have the Orton Slough water recharging that lake. I think that's one of the concerns that, uh, Mr. Dressler's had, is that the Orton Slough is a contributor to that water level, along with the output of Port Neal plants. It's, it's hard to say how that would ultimately impact the, the water levels in the lake if we bypass. To me, I think it would be better to shorten up and, and cut in along the north edge of that DNR line, bring that water in in a shallow area, or, you know, the area that's already somewhat sediment laden there. If we were going to bypass, and again, that's probably in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy to four hundred thousand.
That's dollars, yeah.
Again, that's really, I think, beyond what the folks at Brown's Lake would be expected to do. Their, their share roughly is a quarter of that right now. And somewhere, if it was possible to find other monies to bring to it, you know, whether it's looked at as, yeah, I don't know if anything through economic development, the TIP development down in that area could help with that drainage development.
Well, probably can in the future.
You know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, there was a little thing the outside fox that, that he was offering in an attempt to address a, a potential issue there for, uh, that had come up in the discussion in, in our last public meeting.
You bet. There's one, one more option for us anyway, Mark. Any other concerns from the board, Mark? John, did you have?
My question, can I say? Um, I just want to bring the board up to date on a couple developments tied to the city of Sioux City's projects, which may impact their jurisdiction. I think some weeks ago, we sent you a note, some kind of email regarding the proposed annexation of about three hundred acres of ground south of Whispering Creek. It's a property known as a former Kenny Colson Farm, now owned by Brian Peterson. Brian is taking the Colson Farm per se and adding some ground he owns to the east, and has requested it be annexed. Issues tied to that, I believe we've got a meeting at one thirty with the city on a proposed twenty-eighty agreement regarding maintenance and maybe improvements along one forty-one at or about the Glen Ellen and one forty-one intersection. Although the developer doesn't want to, the city looks like currently they are going to be pressing for connecting Glen Ellen Road as it leads the south end of Whispering Creek to Glen Ellen at that intersection, our existing Glen Ellen. I would assume if that is required by the city and post-construction, that will put a tremendous amount of pressure on county roadway systems south of Whispering Creek. If I recall, that was in your five-year plan some years ago.
It's no longer in the.
But it's no longer there.
No, it's there.
We, we will probably get additional residential pressure down there once that connection, if it's made, is made. The other comment I want to make is we received a conditional use permit application from the city of Sioux City. Approximately three thousand feet of the south bridge rail spur going from the Union Pacific Rail Line to their south bridge project flows through Woodbury County. To put a location description for you, Alicia two twenty-fifth, south of there. Picture the former Twenty-Seventh Flags Golf Course, south end of that. Golf Course is currently within the city limits of Sioux City. We're talking about the pro, the south end of the golf course, head east to the existing rail line, that's our three thousand feet. Our ordinances provide that the city's required to get a conditional use permit, so we control whether or not that happens. Our preliminary assessment begins tomorrow night, so the commission makes a recommendation to your board of adjustment, which will meet next Monday, the seventh, and make a determination whether we're going to issue that permitting. Currently, we see no issue that would prevent that permit being issued. We want to keep you apprised that it's coming down the pipe. We anticipate construction will begin latter part of July if that permit is issued.
Mr. Nelson happy now?
Uh, Mr. Nelson, who's the senior planner for the Sioux City of Sioux City, took exception to the county expediting their permit application. We had made a comment to him that we probably aren't going to get down this thing done until August, and he went and told his superiors that, and then permitting shows up the next forty-eight hours, everything starts rolling in. City wants to start in July, we are accommodating them. And if we made a mistake, it was not getting back to Mr. Nelson to tell him that we had put it on fast track. The, the permit application, everything else came outside, from outside the city, came from their engineers. And I don't think, my perception was that their consultants were not speaking with their staff, so. But we'll take it easy.
All right, you bet. Thanks, John, thanks, Mark. Anyone else?
John, housekeeping on that, what was it?
Oh.
On A, A and B, there were, you did A, but you said B was.
Well, they went right to a vote, and that's all item B was, was making a decision to approve the recommendation.
And there was only one motion, and there was supposed to be two.
And that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's what you had.
What, on the signature then?
No, there was A and B, receive the office planning zone recommendation for confinement feeding operation.
Okay, all right.
And then there was consideration approval recommendation to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, which one did you vote on?
We, we voted on. Yeah, we voted on the first one.
Move on B.
All right, and then?
Is there a second?
Record.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, indicate, saying aye?
Aye.
That's Kate, take it. We'll get a letter for your signature. Pat, thanks for catching that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Board members? The other items?
Pardon?
I have a question.
Oh, I know, there was a, I mean, this is just, but five C, if there wasn't a motion, we should do a motion to receive the certificate of achievement for excellent planets or.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Discussion, those in favor indicate, saying aye? Those opposed, saying aye. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Entertaining motion to adjourn this meeting?
Thank you.
So my dad is really, I'm sorry that I didn't bring the donuts. You brought donuts, you're all my friends. What was I thinking? He texted me, why didn't you bring some donuts?
That's right.
Just grab a cent in the shoe.
Okay, I'll, I'll show you with her. She's the biggest question. Um, hi, why don't you back over and bring it on out?
You got, I heard you type it out loud.
About all this, I'm only giving you.
Do you want to, you root it, or do you want to, what, you just believe them, or get your son right now? I'll, I'll say it right. There's three copies there. One will go to Pat, and one will go in, of course.
They're going to be marked?
Yeah, we'll keep them for.
Are you a swimmer out there?
I, yeah, I'm a swish swimmer.
I drove out live, I, I don't like.
The river's money, yeah.
I'm sure I'll, later, save them. Boy can fuck, I feel like it's still recording.
Well, it's so. What really needs to happen?
Well, it's, it's still running, and I think it's taken one, two, three, four, just so. I think we could pick numbers up. Now, we could turn down all the controls.
I think. I would, if it doesn't work out, just wait until it's down and up, go aside, my guy will hear it. I was on fire. The whole period, that's unfair.
I mean, I can see both sides.